Good evening. Thank you for joining us for the Monday, November 27th edition of the Board of Selectmen Highway Commissioners and Cemetery Commissioners meeting. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And just want to let everyone know this meeting is being recorded. First on the agenda, accept the minutes of 11:13 2003. Mr. Marcy?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of November 13th, 2023 as written.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Do we want a separate motion for executive minutes?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. And next to accept the executive session minutes of 11:13 2023 not to release.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Next on the agenda is citizen comments. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on something that is not on this evening's agenda? Seeing and hearing none. Next on the, next on the agenda, the Town Administrators' Report.
Mr. Chairman, just a few brief updates for tonight. The, uh, the town has requested an extension to its application for the FY24 Shared Streets and Spaces grant through Maston. The town has been working with tie-in bond on the conceptual design, which required several revisions, which is why we need the extension. The goal of the grant is to improve pedestrian safety at the intersection of Dudley Hill, Airport Road, and Tanyard Road. And we are working with Nichols College to improve a critical pedestrian link between the campus and the golf course. When the design phase has been fully completed, the town intends the big construction phase of the project in the late winter, early spring of 2024. And the amount of the grant funding awarded in 2022 is $176,895. The library trustees have hired an interim librarian for 90 days. Part of her duties will be to sort through some of the operational issues and get things back on track, and to work toward a permanent replacement for the position of Library Director, and to find a replacement for the Youth Services Librarian who recently resigned, I believe last week. The acting interim librarian is the, uh, the recently retired Library Director from Charlton. And I think the trustees made a good decision in appointing an interim librarian that has proven experience locally, um, to kind of right the ship and get the library back on track. And finally, Mr. Chairman, the police chief has reported that the animal shelter has been cleaned out and completely sanitized, and we had a private vendor come in and do that work. Uh, some minor repairs were made to get the building back into shape to serve our local animal control needs. And this was a cooperative effort that included the highway superintendent and staff led by the police chief, uh, much of it on his own initiative and time. I just wanted to make sure the board was able to publicly recognize the teamwork that took place to get that shelter back into place. And we certainly appreciate the cooperation between departments and the volunteerism shown by our employees. Um, and that's, of course, for the benefit of the community. And that's all I have for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ruta. Any, uh, any questions or comments for the Town Administrator?
Just a comment, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Excuse me. We mentioned it many times, and it's not just tonight. But things like this where police chief stepped up, Jeff and his staff stepped up. And it's, it's not that they're just highway guys, or we don't have a DPW, but they go above and beyond. There's plenty of examples right in this building where highway guys have come in and used their own skills to save the town money, to do something to better the town. And I just publicly want to thank Chief Kalowitz and Superintendent Murray and all their people because it really makes a difference when we can count on people to do things above and beyond the scope of their functions.
Offside, Mr. Sullivan.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Marcy?
Motion to accept Town Administrator's report?
Second.
Motion, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Ruta. Next on the agenda, public hearing, continuation of the tax classification hearing. Lisa Berg, Principal Assessor. The hearing was initially opened on 11:13 2023 at 6:36 PM, and it is now 6:42 PM. Lisa?
Good evening.
Okay, so this is my annual classification hearing, and we don't ever have any major changes. It's pretty much very close to what it was all the prior years. Um, let's hope this PowerPoint works this year. Is this supposed to be read?
Will you only take clicks and I don't know if you need to press that.
Possible.
Oh, hit it again. Turn it back on.
It's waiting. Did you?
Very good.
Okay, so the purpose of the tax classification hearing is so the board is, is for the Board of Selectmen to vote to determine if the town should have a single tax rate or split tax rate? A vote for a single tax rate would mean there's only one tax rate for all classes of property. That would be real estate, personal property, commercial, and industrial. A vote for a split tax rate would shift the burden from the residential tax rate to the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. So currently, you can see 93.6% is what we have for residential. We have 1.9% of industrial, 2.3% is commercial, and 2.2% is personal property. Here are our historical class percentages. As you can see, from 2016 up, they've moved very slightly. I mean, residential from last year to this year was 93.2 to 93.6. So right now, we only have one taxpayer that's valued over $9 million, which is utility, Massachusetts Electric. We have two taxpayers that are over $6 million. One is a utility, Boston Gas, and then an industrial company here in town. We have one taxpayer over $3 million, which is Henke SASS, which is industrial. One taxpayer over $4 million, and then six taxpayers that are over $2 million. And that's a combination of residential, commercial, and industrial. Then we have 22 taxpayers that are over $1 million in value. Everyone else is below the $1 million. And you can see we have Verizon New England, which is a utility, um, Chartered So currently, the single-family home's average value, uh, tax value is 393, 326. The average values of condominiums are 181, 840. Two families are at 299, 617. Three families are at 351, 125. Commercial properties are averaging 364, 64, and industrial properties are averaging So we have the recap just about done. Um, I'm coming up with a tax rate of 1040 right now, and this is estimated because we don't know if, uh, the DOR is going to go through it and see if anything needs to be adjusted. If it does, it might change that slightly, but I try to get as close as I can. So currently, at the proposed tax rate for residential at $10.40, um, the average single family is assessed at 393, 326, which brings the average tax bill to $4,091. With the tax rate being single on the commercial, industrial, and pers- personal property classes, their average is a value of 420,352, which brings their average tax bill to 4,0372. So I just did some examples like I do every year. What would happen if we, um, split the tax rate? So I went in 5% increments, um, as I do every year. So we shifted 1% to 5% off of the residential and onto the other three classes. Um, the average single tax bill for residential would decrease by $12 a year. If we went up to 1092 and shifted the burden onto the other three classes, their tax bill would increase $218 per year. If you go down the list on the decrease/increase column, you can see the top line of each section. Um, 1% to 5%, you would see in residential a $12 decrease, then $28 if you go up, $44, so on and so forth. And if you get all the way up to 30%, the, the residential properties are only saving $83 in the tax bill. And if you look at the increase in the tax rate to the other three classes, you start at 218, then they go up to 437, and you go all the way down the list, and they would get hit with $1,300 more a year in their tax bill in the, um, industrial, personal property, and commercial classes. So yes, there is a saving to residential, but it can be quite a big hit on the other classes. And what I explained to you every year, you saw the pie chart I had. You saw that we're 93 point something in residential. There's very little residential, commercial, and industrial properties. The larger, um, the larger properties in town are, a lot of them are utilities. We don't have a lot of large, large businesses. Like, we have Henke SASS, we have HAML, we have, uh, Gentex. Um, those are pretty much our largest businesses in town. The rest are all smaller businesses that are struggling now, even more so since So here's our assessed values by class. As you can see, it's, it's gone up a little bit every year, but nothing drastic. So our assessment date for fiscal 2024 is January 1st of 2023. Uh, on new construction, it's June 30th. That's when we can send out supplemental bills if a property, a new construction has increased more than 50% than it did the prior year. The Department of Revenue approved our fiscal 2024 values on September 8th of this year. There's 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts, and only 119 of these have a split tax rate. We went from 72nd place, I think, um, for the lowest tax rate down to 57th place this year. Um, so we're amongst the lowest. So the overall increases this year for single families, it was an average of a 9% increase. Condominiums increased an average of 21%. Multifamilies increased an average of 5%. Commercial industrial properties increased an average of 2%. The town's growth this year was 17,427,640. This generated an additional revenue to the town of $177,065. And here is your five-year history. So you see, down in 2020, we were at 1306. We dropped down to 1230, down to 1170, down to 1016. And even with the three overrides that we had, uh, we only went from 1016 to 1040. So here's the comparison of tax rates for surrounding towns. If you look at the tax rate column, nobody's at $10 and change for a tax rate. The average single-family tax bill compared to Dudley is much larger. The residential percentage and personal property and commercial industrial percentages fluctuate a little bit up or down from us, but as you can see, even the towns that have a higher, um, commercial, industrial, and personal property class, they still have a single tax rate. They have not shifted. Webster, I believe, I told you last year, had a split tax rate for several years, and they worked their way down over the past few years to get that back to a single tax rate for everybody. And they certainly have a lot more commercial and industrial than we do. So in conclusion, it is the recommendation of the Board of Assessors that the Board select and vote on a residential factor of one, which would continue our historical single tax rate. Do you have any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, um, thank you, Lisa, as always. Good presentation. So I have a question on your last slide. Recommendation of the Board of Assessors.
Yes.
Came up in candidates night last year, a person running for Selectmen who is an assessor. I don't want to say advocate, that's a strong word, but mentioned from the table that he thought the town should consider or look at a split rate. Was that, when it says recommendation, was that an official vote of your board that?
So we, we do not have to take an official vote. It's a recommendation, and I, I polled all three of them. Um, and one of the board members at a meeting in the past had suggested that we have a split tax rate for industrial and everybody else have a single tax rate. I explained that it has to be commercial, industrial, and personal property with a higher tax rate, with residential as a lower tax rate. You can't pick and choose single groups and who gets it. So, um, like I said, I, I polled all three assessors. Two out of the three said yes, stay with a single tax rate. The last one stated that if we couldn't have, um, a higher rate for industrial properties, then it was a no-brainer that we should just stick with a single tax rate.
Thank you.
So it was unanimous that all three board members want, are asking for, are recommending a single tax rate.
Interesting. Thank you.
They don't have to, oh, it's interesting. They don't have to take an official up and down.
They should. Um, Mr. Marcy?
Yes, thank you, Lisa. Helpless always. Just like watching these over the last few years. And the thing that stuck out to me in the last slide was, we have the same stats as Douglas from the percentage of, uh, uh, commercial, residential. They were always higher than us, and now we're the same. And 6.2% with commercial, industrial. So, um, that's pretty stark to me. You just, you know, Dudley continues to be a bedroom community that we try to like work on as much economic development as possible. Um, and I think we're getting a pretty, pretty damn good bang for our buck, you know, at, even at this rate compared to these other towns.
One thing I'd like to point out, too, the tax rate, that, that's just the, the amount for a thousand that you're taxed. It doesn't matter if it's a thousand or, or a dollar. What is your tax bill? What do you pay? And the Dudley tax bills are lower than everyone else by at least 5%. At least 5% at the minimum, and that's Leicester. Mr. Sullivan?
No, in Mr. Marcy's example, Douglas's, those tax rates Lisa presented around 2023, and Douglas in last year's rate is going, is currently about $4 greater than our rate. If, I know you don't do their tax classification hearing, but if fair assumption, their tax rate might even go up a little bit. So you're comparing apples and oranges, and they're really apples and oranges. It's 2023, and where are we going to next year?
There really aren't, no, but the, but the trend for us is we're becoming more residential over time. Since I've been on this board, we've definitely been trending that way. So we have to continue to try to be, you know, have a business-friendly environment to continue to, you know, balance it so it's not all borne by the taxpayer.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just have, I just have another, I made a couple of notes. Just gonna call them back up, sorry. So, and I'm not sure where to address this. Lisa did the presentation, but the treasurer collector's here. While we were going through the process of presenting the override, especially at town meeting, the number that was presented was, it was going to be like a dollar 21, 20 something increase. So based on the numbers, we actually only added 24 cents on the override. So I guess my question would be, how much debt did we actually retire off the tax rate? Because we, we kept telling residents that, too. We have some maturing debt coming off.
Twenty-four cent? I think it was 24 cents that retired.
Okay, so if we were giving, we were, we were being given figures of 121, that means it was really more like 97. It's about a 20% roughly. Because if it was a dollar, it's 24, it's 24. So.
Mr. Carter?
I yield.
Good evening. It's a moving target. Lisa did her tax classification hearing, and she's got 99% of those numbers in place. The estimate had a few things kept constant. The increase would have been based off of the previous year's calculation with no increase other than removing the one component from the tax rate, if that makes sense. So, so-
The component, they're retiring debt?
You're going to have your levy, and it keeps moving up. On top of the levy is what would be debt excluded. So if you took the snapshot as of mid-May, kept as many things similar as you could, and netted off the debt that was being retired, that would give you a place to start as far as a reduction. You had $390,000 off the top of my head, uh, retired in debt service payments, but you also had some- in debt service payments, but you also had some others come on. You had some debt that had level principal but declining interest. So you had multiple debt on there. It's always a moving target with five or six different pieces in there. I don't want to give you a non-answer, but you retired just about four hundred thousand dollars on a fourteen-four levy? So that would be the, the presumed reduction. That's, I'm, I'm doing this from memory and that's with everything else being even. You have a tax rate here that is based on the newest values, which drive your tax rate down because you're calculating out to a levy amount, which will be two and a half plus new growth for the upcoming year.
Well, we calculated it out too. I think what we did is there was retiring debt and there was debt coming on. The retiring debt was twenty-four cents and, and the combination between the two ended up that the tax rate would go up nineteen cents from that estimation.
So here's a wild question and I'm not sure if you have the answer. If the overrides all failed, would we be looking at a tax rate in the nine dollars? And probably with the two-day week town hall and other, but just, just a argument. If you don't have the number, that's fine, maybe for the next meeting. I just wanna, it, it, I don't know, Mark Landry, you're better than me at this number stuff. It just, I like, I wanna like stress the, the fact that, as John said, you know, we get the bang for our buck, as Lisa has proven historically. I mean, we're, we're going thirteen sixty-five years ago to ten forty?
Ten forty now.
Ten forty. And I get it, values go up, so your bill goes up, that's all people care about, the bottom line, me too, I pay taxes. But we're in two thousand and twenty-four fiscal year with a tax rate in the tens and I, I challenge, with three out of five overrides, challenged some of the, and the twenty-five, twenty-five million dollar budget, towns around us, Lisa showed the tax rate, we showed the budgets around us, fifty-five million next town over. Well, I mean, we're, we're dwarfed with.
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight million, sorry. We're, we're, it's just, I just can't bring that point home enough, twenty-four cents and we have four dollars less than Douglas, as John pointed out, is a pretty good comparison with virtually the same statistics.
Thank you. So, so a piece of that is the new growth, bigger amount, less dollar per thousand because you have more thousands that you're taxing. Makes sense?
Yes. And the thing that came up to me, if you go through, you had a five percent increase on a two-family home, but the biggest increase was on your condominiums. So again, it's the rate per thousand at the valuation divided where you are on that average, average tax bill. So that's why somebody's going to get a surprise for their condo because they've increased the most, all things being equal. So you're right, I think Mr. Sullivan hit the nail on the head. Not having success at the polls probably would have brought the tax rate below ten. I mean, it's, it's not a, a strong position to be in and I'm glad things moved forward, but conversationally, your neighbors are outpacing you and that's, so there's a good academic exercise, if, if nothing else, that there's an opportunity to grow your, your tax base.
No opportunity, Mr. Chairman, to grow the tax base at this point. I mean, you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson?
I got a question. Did the number of residential, uh, residential residences, did the number, let's put this up, did the number of residences go up and the number of industrial go down or did one go up and the other state?
Well, we, we, we had, um, several subdivisions going on that were only partially complete last year, so we picked up all, all the condos on Airport Road, Truman Drive. Um, there was a couple others too, I can't think of off the top of my head because it was so far back in the year, um, that we finished, we did, we did end up with a lot of new residential homes this year.
So industrial probably stayed about the same and everything else, the residences, number of residents.
So, Mr. Johnson's argument, but question, Lisa, what was the net loss by losing Mace? What was that, they were, they were one of your bigger?
I don't know that off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, cause I'm, I'm looking at the bottom line, our new growth is a hundred and seventy-seven thousand and Mace was definitely.
It was one building, so we took one building off.
Also the rest they got taxed.
The rest is still there being taxed.
All right, so it's probably not as big a hit as I thought, but.
No.
It's bigger than losing a house probably though.
Yes. And they lost employees on top of that.
Yeah, yeah, less jobs, absolutely.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Rich.
Thanks, Rich.
Mr. Chairman, just to put it in perspective, our revenue, our, our local revenues went up one percent, thirty-four thousand dollars this year. Just to show you what we're facing in FY twenty-five, it's just the pushback that the board received unfortunately over the last eight months does not match the reality or the facts of the situation at all. And we've tried to say that right along consistently. There's no, if, if we've, we've chased economic development, usually there's pushback with that. Whether it's the project, whether manner and it's done, or the way it's been zoned, there's pushback. We've, we've, we've saved, we've saved police officers, we've saved paramedics. It's clear that you can't work with this amount of money, even with the three overrides passing. It's clear, it's crystal clear and if it isn't, I, I'm not sure what to do at this point, but it's gotta be crystal clear at this point that that's, this is not a sustainable way to continue, even with the three passed overrides, to get the level of services that the town needs. There's nobody's, nobody's, no old ladies are eating cat food. There was never danger of old ladies eating cat food. The pushback that this board received was unfair and it was unwarranted and the facts back that up a hundred and ten percent. So for the part that I played in it, if the communication was not clear enough, I don't know how much more clear we could have possibly been with it. At least the, the facts are bearing out the actual facts of the matter as opposed to the history on extent when, for the six months before the, this tax classification hearing. It's, it's hard for me to understand how on by August seventeenth, when we had the last vote, we were off a buck in the increase in the tax rate that we were advertising to people and then here we are tonight with a twenty-four cent increase. That's very difficult for me to swallow, but I think it probably goes towards, uh, it goes to show that some of the grants that we've gotten for the, like the human resources review that says we need a finance director and we need more help, which is, you know, was completely out of the question over the last six months. If you want a better protection, projection of these numbers, we've got to get more help in here. I, I think it, go ahead, Mr. Sullivan. No, really, go ahead.
No, I, maybe I should save this for selected comments, but since we just did the tax classification hearing, I think Mr. Ruder is being quite humble. I don't think he should be publicly shouldering much blame for the way things went. Facts were facts. We just had our treasurer collector get up and give a, um, discussion on how it works with debt and interest and principal. Principal Assessor, who's been doing this, how many years?
Going on twenty-one.
Twenty-one years. Just gave us another tax classification hearing where she shows the breakdown, the cost, the increase and the comparables. We had a independent audit last meeting, who the treasurer got up at a previous meeting and was confident in the auditor's abilities. I mean, I, I don't, and I'm sure people at home right now are probably shaking their head, I don't know what more, what, what more can be delivered between our professional staff and our professional contractors than what we have. I mean, it's, you know, Mr. Ruder said it best and nobody, I'm sure nobody wants to hear, it's an, not a sustainable financial model. Nobody wants to pay more, I don't want to pay more. But it's not, it's not a financially stable model. Lisa's numbers bears it out. Richard's description tonight bears it out and the auditor's summation of the town's audit bears it out. There's, there's no hidden anything, there's no red flag, it's just, it, fact, numbers are numbers, facts are fact. You deal with numbers the whole time, Mr. Chairman, you know, you know what it is.
I've seen a number or two. But, but I think regardless of what happened last budget season, this budget season, I've always said it, the town meeting voters, they get what they want. That's the way it is, it's democracy in action. And last year, I think the residents got involved towards the end because in years prior, things were smooth. Things were smooth. We, we kept our, our bummed down on, on, you know, tax rate and we just did more with less, but it reached a point where we couldn't. And I think it caught a lot of people by surprise, I think it caught us by surprise. I think coming into this budget season, I think people are paying attention and I think people are going to show up to budget hearing, something we really haven't had, which is great because people should get what they want, people should be educated on what's out there and if they don't like what's there, they can propose different things. Like I said, at the end of the day, town meeting, people are going to get what they want. Mr. Marcy?
Yeah, that was a great point, Mr. Chairman, you know, big to thought for me. Um, you know, we learned a lot, we listened a lot and like looking forward is the way to go, you're absolutely right. And I think in this coming budget season, you know, we, we, we take those learnings, right? Which is, you know, like to Mr. Ruder's point, you know, about communication, we know how to be better about that now and we know what people are going to be looking for. You know, now we have, Debbie has been fantastic with putting that stuff out there on our, on our page so people can consume it where they want to consume it. But, um, you know, Jonathan, like you've been there since day one, putting it all together. I don't think you should shoulder, shoulder all that, all that, like what you just said. I think, you know, falls on us as a board to, you know, like I said, to Carrie's point, caught us off guard a little bit, you know, of that, how people reacted. So we need to listen and we need to be better about how we, how we communicate and make sure that they get what they need so they can be informed.
It's as simple as that.
You know, Mr. Chair, too, you, you hit the nail on the head. Town meeting determines everything. We understand that. So last year we had four hundred and sixty-two, I think it was, or? Great, I, I would like to, I like to have so many people there, we have to put them in the cafeteria. But then the FEA does a budget hearing and we got department heads. Board of Selectmen does a budget hearing, we have nobody. We had the auditor in, publicized on social media at your, your, your behest, three people showed up, one person talked. Tonight we have a tax classification hearing, which is gonna set your tax rate, you, you bequeaths you, all of us that live in town. It's gonna set your tax rate. Mr. Clark came in. I almost said nobody. Mr. Clark came in.
Thanks for the promotion, I appreciate that.
But, that, that, you know, town meeting's great and ever since I've been involved with whatever, it was Jim Whitney, Pat Flynn, or our current moderator, Mr. Stashevsky, it, it's a place to get your questions answered, but it's not a place to have the public hearing. Like the, the last one, the person went through the budget, line item by, department by department. No, the time to do that is during the budget process. And you hit, I know, you hit it on the head. I'd love to have, like I said, a thousand people at every town meeting. I'd, I'll stay there all night, come back the next night if we had to. If there's more people right here than came to the auditor, tax classification hearing and probably every FEA hearing combined that weren't town employees.
And Mr. Clark's on a board, so he's, he's above a, well, nobody's nobody, but he's not just a citizen coming off the street, he's, he shows up to everything.
Saying he's a regular.
Yeah, he is a regular.
No, but, Mr. Chairman, one more point, just like, like it's silly saying that is, not only have we learned, the residents have learned. They know what, they know what questions to ask, they know what to expect going forward because, because they started to pay attention with better. And we, it was smooth because we had everything in control. And then last year with all the stuff that we've talked about, you know, macro and micro issues that caused our budget to go out of whack, um, we want to get back to two hands on the wheel and smooth sailing, right? We'll need everybody's help to do that.
Anything else?
Just to break it down a little bit, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, what I've noticed is there's a process to follow. Everybody had spot-on comments this evening and we have a lot of skilled people, professionals, uh, educating us, letting us know, uh, the best course of action. DOR, DLS also have, uh, explanations of, uh, the budgeting process, uh, when you should get involved, who gets involved, to what degree, who oversees it. Uh, Mr. Ruder brought up a lot of good points. Um, we do need more people, um, finance director, we're looking at Mr. Sullivan, uh, breaking it down, the people showing up, uh, during the process, um, what the board's position is during the process versus the town administrator's position, uh, they're different. Um, and then the people, when they're involved in the FAA, they're supposed to give the recommendation after they review it as well. So there are a lot of components that happen during the whole process, not just at the end. And if you come in at the end, like a lot of things, you can get lost. And then you're just grabbing for strings of what anybody says that makes sense to you and you forget about the process that happened the whole year and you can't do that. As you saw the numbers, heard the explanations, reasoning, we cannot slip and go backwards at any point in our taxes. We're too far behind right now. And people saw it and who watched this, so there are no surprises. Uh, you know, pay attention, show up, there are no surprises. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Anything else on the, on this matter or anyone? What's the board's pleasure?
Close the hearing.
Oh, I have to close the hearing, sorry. Closing the hearing at seven seventeen P M. What is the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, make a recommendation, a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Board of Assessors to maintain a factor of one on our tax rate for the next fiscal year.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Lisa.
I just want to say too, if anybody wants to see this presentation, it's on our website, on the assessor's website. Um, our field cards are back online and our tax maps are back online. Um, they're all updated, they should be all updated with the new assessments and I'll be putting a file up of every parcel in town and what the new assessed values are. So they have one, two, three, four ways of, three ways of finding us.
Mr. Chair, can we have, uh, social media coordinator, put that on the town's page, so they know it's there? Cause I don't want someone coming and saying, it's not there, what are you talking about? I'll put it out there, let people see it.
The town's page.
Fantastic job, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Next on the agenda, public business, approval of policies, fraud prevention policy and separation from service policy prepared by the Edward J. Collins Jr. Center for Public Management through the H R grant. Mr. Chairman, um, we got a, just as a reminder to, I'm sure the board remembers, but a public reminder that we received a community compact best practices grant and had an independent consultant come in from the Edward J. Collins Center at UMass to do a complete review of our HR systems where we could gain improvements and efficiencies and to give us some ideas as to best prac- practices. And a portion of that, uh, report, which is of course available online on the town's website, was to, uh, adopt, modify and amend certain policies and we've been filtering those in as the board recalls over the last six months or so. So tonight I'm asking the board, and these have been already also vetted by our labor council, to approve a few, uh, of the policies to get us closer to being in sync with the best practices for municipalities across the Commonwealth. One is a fraud prevention policy and separation from service policy. Fraud prevention policy and a separation from service policy. The board's had a chance to look at them, uh, they've been in the one drive for a while and so we're, we're doing a few every time we have a meeting.
And so we're doing a few every time we have a meeting so that we can get up to speed. So I'm asking for the board to vote to approve those two policies tonight.
Mr. Marcy?
Mr. Chairman, as Mr. Ruda said, I've read those. They're out in the drive. And I move that we approve following policies, the fraud prevention policy and the separation from service policy that was prepared by the Edward J. Collins Jr. Center for Public Management through the H.R. Grant.
Effective.
Effective today.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Sullivan?
I'd like to thank Mr. Ruda and his team. These grants just don't fall from a tree. Somebody has to apply, do the legwork to get these. It's going to dovetail to comments later, but when someone says, "Everybody gets these grants." Not everybody does. Somebody has to do the work. So I just publicly thank Mr. Ruda and his team for getting that grant.
Agreed. There was a long stretch of time in the years past where we got no grants, and that has changed over the past few years. Next on the agenda, cemetery rules and regulations, updated policy. Mr. Ruda?
Mr. Chairman, this policy update was spearheaded by Assistant Town Administrator Michelle. And she worked with our intern to kind of update our cemetery rules and regulations, which really, for a long time, were geared more towards the convenience of the maintenance staff as opposed to the convenience of the grieving families and so forth. So she went through, it was her initiative, her idea. We updated these cemetery rules and regulations to be more in sync with surrounding towns and more consistent with the needs of the community. So again, those have been in the One Drive for the board to read through, give any feedback it may have. And I'm asking you to consider updating the policy and approving that tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Ruda. Any questions or comments on the new policy? I'd like to say that, oh, go ahead, Mr. Marcy. Are you sure? I didn't see your finger go up. That's why I was just going to go in. You did us all.
Kay's got his finger up.
Got two.
Got two?
Be for victory.
All right, I'm going to go last.
You want to go first?
I'll go last. Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
So I appreciate the modernization and all the effort that went into this to properly reflect what should really happen as cemetery commissioners. It's, you know, it's not necessarily a revolution, but it's definitely an evolution to meet the needs of the cemeteries and the grieving families. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well said, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Marcy?
Yeah, that's a great point, Mr. Johnson. Just, I also want to get on the, you know, the fact that it was initiative that Michelle took to do this. You know, this was something that she wanted to do and did it. You know, you can't teach that. Michelle just picks things up and fixes it. Jonathan has that in his DNA as well. We have all these things that are just, stay out there for a long time. And we still find the time to move it forward. So thank you both.
Mr. Sullivan?
Keep your last, Mr. Chair. So it goes back to, I believe, and Michelle can correct me, four or five years ago, maybe, maybe a little bit more, we had a scout, a scout, right, come in for a project to map graves. And Michelle helped spearhead that project too. So as Mr. Marcy said, when someone picks it up and runs, we had a person come in with a project, needed some help. And you can say with certainty, Michelle has been working on cemeteries in one form or another since that young man finished his badge. I remember he came before us. But again, people doing things above and beyond in the beginning becomes part of their job and then they continue to see it to its finish. Much appreciated, as Mr. Johnson said.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Anyone else? Okay, I'll go. I think the thing that I like about this is in the past, it was a policy that was friendly to those who were in charge of maintaining the cemeteries. But none of us here, top to bottom, we're not here for an employee, we're not here for any of that. We're here for the residents. And this shows we're here for the residents, not just the ones that are living, but the ones that have passed. And we just need to do the right thing by the residents. And this is that. This updates, as Mr. Johnson said, this modernizes this. This updates it. This makes it more friendly for the grieving families. It might take a little extra to maintain it. Maybe it won't. But bottom line, it's for the residents. So this is, this is great. Thank you, Michelle. What is the pleasure of the board? Mr. Marcy?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the updated cemetery rules and regulations.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Michelle. Next on the agenda, departmental communication. Mr. Carmini, do you have anything?
Good evening. Need to start by thanking the board. There are three in the treasure collector's office. It's a good number. So thank you for your consideration. My apologies for not being here, but by all accounts, our candidate did very well. Thank you. A few items. The Hampshire Council of Governments Insurance Trust, they're closing their Medicare open enrollment. Modest increase for the Medicare amount, but more importantly, that was the meeting where they went through and did their deeper dive. Board of Selectmen watched the assessors go through sort of how the tax rate is set. Very similar demonstration was made directly by Blue Cross. These are your highest expenditures. These are how Blue Cross anticipates reducing these expenditures. And it was sort of that deeper dive so that when you get an increase of 2% or 3% in your health insurance, there really has been that second review of how things work. And remember, they are still in the third year of cannibalizing part of that trust. So what I'm going to ask you for coming up shortly is going to be an approval for an HMO, PPO rate that would be priced lower than market because historically, they're cannibalizing that principle. That's a discussion. I'll make sure that we have additional information for that. We had a tax classification hearing tonight, which means sometime in the not-so-near-future, we're going to have a tax bill amount. I will do my best to make sure they arrive on Christmas Eve, as is the collector's purview. I say that. It happened once. I don't think you could do that a second time. However, if anyone is traveling, usually after the holidays, people want to go down to Florida or they're doing whatever, I have the ability to go through, once those tax bills are committed to me and at least get you a copy of that if you wanted to go through and make your payment in the calendar year of 2023, paying the 24 taxes. There's a small group of people who actually do reach out and I hear wretched. And I'm happy to go through and make sure that they have the better information. There's a good side for the third quarter taxes coming up. There's a bad side for the third quarter taxes coming up. There will be water and sewer liens. So right now, we have a December 7th water sewer bill. Anything on that bill from the previous fiscal year that has not been paid is subject to be leaned to your third quarter taxes. Most escrow arrangements through your lender do not provide for the payment of items other than taxes. When I say lean, it's added to the tax bill for the sake of collection. So if there's any questions on that, we can go through and make sure that the resident understands exactly what may or may not be placed as a lien on the tax bill. More recently, we perfected the lien for the unpaid tax title amounts. For everyone's sake, there is nothing waiting at land court for the final gavel to come out. I know the statement equity theft was made at one or more Selectmen's meetings. I don't think we're at that point yet. Right now, I wouldn't speak for the land court, but I think everyone's actions are very deliberate. I will raise my hand and say that any tax lien that's over three years old has already had its due diligence performed, meaning that it is a valid tax lien, regardless of when the town chooses to start foreclosure processes on. So our interests are protected for a modest review by the tax title attorney. Other than that, fingers crossed that our Monday nights are more fruitful. Remember, the Board of Selectmen had Thursday nights as the late night. Monday is the late night. Hopefully, that gets people into the routine of coming in and taking care of their business. I can't judge what the late Monday night would be because I've only been to one out of the two so far. Tonight was quiet as well. So thank you for your time. Mr. Marcy?
Yeah, Rich, I have this email we were following about the better, speaking of liens, made me think about it. The betterment that we've been talking about.
Yes.
I saw that the thread that evolved that we do have like a process now. Do you feel that this is like to a point where we can actually have it when other people come in to pay off their betterment ahead of schedule?
I'm only catching half of the conversation. I think from a few feet away, the most important part of the thread from my end was the Board of Selectmen went through, made the order, improved the road. Whether somebody paid or didn't pay, the point that needed to be solidified was going to be, when a release is drawn, I'm the person who's signing the release of lien. I'm also going to be the person to record it. And I think that's important. There was sewer betterments, one, two, and three. All of those have been paid. Tax title liens, there are the old block grants from maybe eighty-five to ninety-one. I will not create a release of lien without recording it, whether I'm recording it with town funds, whether the resident purchaser, whomever, is paying for it. It's a moot point. The idea is the finality of making sure that the town had a lien, the release of lien was created and recorded. Too many times, a release of lien never seems to get, make its way to the Worcester Registry of Deeds, and I won't speculate as to why. But I think that's the important takeaway from that.
Yeah, no, I was happy to see that it evolved to the point where it was more of a customer service and we were sort of like, you know, handling that as the town. That was my point. But you feel like, but I just wanted, you feel that we're, if other people come to do this, we'll just, it'll just happen?
I don't remember the rest of the conversation where does the town of Dudley pay the recording fee?
That's probably a discussion we still have to have.
Absolutely, it's a discussion.
All right, I didn't think we solved it yet, but I just, I wanted to acknowledge that, you know, the person was here a couple of weeks ago and brought it up, so.
I think that's most important because too many times, if you're conducting a closing and you have a black ink original that hadn't been recorded, the registry of deeds, and it doesn't make its way to the registry of deeds, the second party walks away having seen the original and it's not there, then there comes to the, I'm not an attorney, but you would run into an unrecorded release of lien and a subsequent unrecorded release of lien where you'd need to make notations on it, hoping to goodness that you had a copy of the original, not recorded. So at the end of the day, it's one of those compliance issues where it's a one-and-done regardless of the circumstance.
No, it makes sense.
The finalities of it. And for what it's worth, still regularly having a sewer betterment release and the block grants. Just, I think, '08 and '09, there was a shift in how banks performed their own compliance, which means they reach out and we go into the files and demonstrate to the lender, buyer, borrower, whomever. But I am happy with it.
No, okay, that's it. I just want to make sure, like, it was a, you know, sort of, you know, since it was the first one, we aren't clear of what had to happen next and who was doing what. So now we're at a point where we do know. That's all I want to know. Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Thank you. Fire chief, is it EMS training this evening? Jeff, do you have anything?
Just the, we're still trying to fill two truck driver labor positions and a mechanic's position at the highway department. We've taken on one new employee, but still working out that. There's an advertisement that's been out and I understand we've received several applications over the last week or so. So we'll be reviewing those and hopefully adding to the workforce. And we're currently still preparing for snow and ice control and preparing equipment for that.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Police chief?
Just real quick, two weeks ago, I received a letter from the Office of Grants that we received or ordered a grant for almost fifty thousand dollars for technology upgrades. Officer Magus was the officer that spearheaded the grant. It's going to be, we're going to be able to replace all the cruiser laptops, which run between four to five thousand dollars each. They're tough books. And also replace some of the in-house computers. So Officer Magus applied for forty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight, and that's what we got out of the possible fifty thousand. So we pretty much got every dollar out of the feds for that one. Also, speaking of grants, December, we start the winter impaired driving patrols. It's extra patrols dedicated to traffic. That's also paid by grants. With the holidays coming up, we have the Santa tour coming up, Saturday, December 9th at nine a.m. If you, if you're a resident in town, log into the Glimpse app. It will be posted on our Facebook and you can follow the Santa Claus throughout town. We're still collecting toys for the toy drive at the police department. And with the holidays coming up, we had an incident where somebody was stealing packages from the front porch recently. We had a great witness who saw it. Gave the great description to the officers. Were able to apprehend the suspect and retrieve all the goods for the residents. And last night, we had an armed robbery, first one in quite a while in town, where a handgun was brandished at a store in town. The suspect got away with an undisclosed amount of money. Anybody that has, can go on Facebook. If you can ID the person, help us out. Reach out to Sergeant Remillard or send us a message through Facebook. Again, with the holidays coming up, watch out for yourselves and your neighbors. And, you know, any suspicious activity, give us a call. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Water sewer, I don't see them. Nope. Student representative, you're up.
Well, I hope you all had a wonderful Thanksgiving. So last Wednesday, the National Honor Society, we held our annual Thanksgiving drive and we were able to provide forty-five families within both Dudley and Charlton with food and be able to deliver to their houses, which was a great thing to be a part of, which we had been raising money for, for I think around a month. So it was a successful event. Today, winter sports started, which is crazy to think that we're already in our winter sports season. The Holiday Spectacular hosted by the Show Choir is on December 8th and 9th. And currently, tickets are on sale on the website. We also hosted our pep rally last Wednesday, which was very exciting. Unfortunately, the sophomores won the whole thing with the events. But I think that's rigged. I think the seniors should have won. Maybe that's just my opinion. And then last Tuesday night, we hosted the Powderpuff to raise money for A.J. Congdon. And the senior and sophomore team won thirty-four to fourteen. So that was exciting for the seniors. At least we got one win last week.
And unfortunately, the Shepherd Hill was defeated on Thanksgiving morning.
Against in task.
Close fight game. Coach hired a very successful first year.
Sure did.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great family.
Great, great family.
Yes, yes, very good. Yes, yes, that's right. Next up, Board of Selectmen comments. Mr. Johnson.
The only thing that jumps in my mind is how, how we need to be thankful for, for all we're blessed with and, you know, try to be kind to those around you. Not everyone's in the same situation. But also, you know, on a more serious note, it's now it's okay to put your Christmas lights on, because, you know, the people that put them on in October make us all look bad. Just kidding.
How about all year round?
Oh, it keeps me off the ladder. So, you know, here we are going into the Christmas season, a lot of great work by, you know, students, PD and others bringing meals to those that couldn't get one otherwise. Really thankful for all the, uh, community spirit.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. You might have to indulge me for a minute, if that's okay.
No, go right ahead.
I had to go back several years in my email. So we talked tonight about the Collins Center out of UMass, which has helped us with policies, which has come to a grant. I was chairman when Dudley was accepted into the Community Compact grant. As a matter of fact, myself and Mr. Bruce's predecessor went to Southbridge to be presented by Lieutenant Governor Polito. I, I don't think we were the first town, but we were one of the first. You know, and subsequent to that, we've also had grants for independent consultants to assist with us with determining best practices. We had a grant for capital improvement planning, did a DPW study and recommendation. It also paid for our cybersecurity review, improvement to the town's network and website. The Community Compact has given funding for the H.R. review, so we can move forward toward better H.R. policies, as you brought up tonight for us. Provided for our salary study. Employee market, local and national, provide a positional grade and chart to ensure people are paid equitable to their duties and local market. Most recently, we also received a Community Compact to study areas in town that are suitable for economic development. So with your blessing, Mr. Chairman, it's a pretty big, pretty big, uh, program. I would like, I would like to have you instruct and or work with the administrator and the assistant for the possibility, if any, which I'm sure there probably is, to get, like, people talk about the review and the audit. There's probably, in this program, there's probably a grant that if the other avenue doesn't work out that we're working on, where we may be able to get funds to either offset or pay in, in its entirety. It seems like people are fixated on independent audits, even though it doesn't seem like there's anything out there. So with your blessing, I think we should have the administrator and his staff look into it through the Community Compact and see what's available, what we may qualify for, and if we do, people will think we're not transparent. We can show transparency and a little motivation incentive to try to provide what people are asking, the vocal ones are asking for. So he may come back and have nothing, but he may come back and say, hey, we got it. And we also have, like I say, other avenues going. So with your discretion or your blessing, Mr. Chair, I think we should ask the administrator to forge ahead with that.
Mr. Administrator, please forge ahead with that.
So, just so we can publicly discuss it, so we can be very transparent.
Would you like to put it on the next agenda, please?
Well, I want to know exactly what the board is asking you to do. I want to know how you, what type of grant you're asking me to apply for.
Can, can we talk about it now, or should we put it on the next agenda?
We can talk about it as long as we don't vote, as far as selectmen's comments. But we can put it on the next agenda, if you'd like, as well.
Well, put it on the next agenda as well, just, just so someone can come and speak about it if they want. I, I think what Mr. Sullivan is saying is people want an audit. Audits aren't cheap. Let's see if there's some money there to pay for some sort of audit services.
I don't think there'll be any money available for an audit service. That's not what they do. But they would do a, an operational review for best practices.
Can we turn over that stone and confirm that they don't? Confirm. Operational review, whatever. The next meeting, put it on the agenda. You can let us know what you were, what you found that would be, whether that or something similar to that. Maybe an operational review, maybe, uh, maybe something we haven't even thought of yet. Let's see. Can't hurt to see.
My terminology was probably off, but I think we both hit it on the head. Let's see. You don't know what's out there if you don't ask.
There's a lot of terminology that's off for bearing audits, but that's okay. That's okay.
We'll do a book face, that's what I'm, book face.
Insta-chat, yes, thank you. All set, Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Landry.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just want to put some, ask people to be a little bit more courteous and cautious out on the roadways, where I see more residents out walking, trying to get exercise before it gets too cold and snowy and pretty bad. But I also see a lot of people not being so thoughtful when they're passing people that are walking. They get pretty close, they go pretty fast. One slip and bad things can happen. I don't like that, and I see it a lot. I see, I see people crossing double lines just because they're impatient, running stop signs. And again, we can't have our public safety in every single spot, every single time. We have to be responsible drivers and adults, and think of one another, especially now around the holidays, please. Okay, people walk with their families, their pets. Let's go slow and think of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Mr. Marcy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just want to give everybody an update on stuff I've been following. Actually, it dovetails nicely with what Sully was talking about. I've left more messages for my contacts at the state. I think they've taken time off this time of year. I really don't have anything concrete to share about them coming in and presenting to us. So I'm, I'm pleased they can help us, division of local mandates and so forth. Everybody, I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. We have a couple of things coming up, this, this, with the tree lighting, Santa's going to be coming to town. So if everybody feels inclined, you know, come on down and, and enjoy, enjoy that. Except we, the tax classification hearing showed some pretty stark trends in Dudley. You know, we, we do a lot with a little, and that's, we wear it as a badge of honor, even though we probably shouldn't, but it is what it is. And we, we're still a full-service town. I like it, I like being a full-service town and being able to have that to offer our residents and, and businesses that are looking to do business in Dudley. We can say that with, with pride, that we're a full-service town, and we prioritize its public safety. So let's, let's continue to keep that in mind as we head into budget season in a few weeks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Marcy. You, you all made great points that I, I would have made, and I, I'm not going to keep saying to be safe driving, because I think we've got that part covered. What I would like to say, though, is I've been thinking about this audit committee. And, and I, I think back to when I was on the FAA, even the FAA now, there aren't many members. And the FAA used to be a large group, boisterous, back before I became involved in public service. They, they would steer a lot of the budget discussion. And that, that doesn't happen anymore, and that, that doesn't speak to the people on the board, there just aren't that many of them. And I see how difficult it is for us to get people to serve on boards. I mean, jeez, we've got people serving on boards that don't even, not even, what, a dozen people voted for them, something like that. I, I think if we're going to have an audit committee, it should be a part of the FAA. Because now, not only do you have people involved with the audit, but they're also involved with the budget. And if they're finance professionals that want to serve the town, and, and they don't have any motive, then they're going to want to be involved in both. They're going to want to be involved in the budget, looking at budgetary items, and also serving on the audit committee. Just something I, I've been thinking about. I know Mr. Marcy has been reaching out a lot to people with the state. We've been in talks with them. And, and just, just an idea that I came across while entertaining thoughts with that. Hasn't gone away, hasn't gone away. People want it, it's going to happen one way or another, whether it's something at town meeting, some sort of a citizens petition, or, or something else. But those are just my thoughts. If we're going to do it, those are my thoughts on how it should go. Hopefully, that starts a conversation in that way. That's all I've got. Next up, adjournment.
Mr. Chairman, I move the adjourn for this evening.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.